Alrighty, folks. Hi. First meeting of 2023, January 5, 2023. Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. You know, I was just telling my wife, I remember when I was thinking, wow, in 2000, I'll be 47 years old. That is really wild, you know? Remember thinking that? 2000?
Y2K.
But anyway, yeah, Y2K. Okay, January 5, 2023. Public comment. We always start our meetings with a public comment, period. Anything relating to planning, try to keep your comments brief. And we also have another comment, period, at the end of the meeting. So let's start with that. Any public comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, have a hand from Toby Arsenian?
Okay. Toby?
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. You're probably aware the government and bylaw committee are meeting Monday. I believe it's 4:30, not certain on that. They're again going over their stormwater bylaw. And as you well know, you're designated to administer it. It's the building inspector to enforce it. I came up with questions at the government and bylaw committee's last meeting about what it's going to cost, that is, cost the town. And apparently Penny Pilzer, who has been doing the redrafting, hadn't thought of such things. But they're essential. As you well know, you hire the professional consultants to review the applications or to present them for the stormwater permits. But the three questions that I had, starting with the planning board, beyond that, which is at the applicant's expense, will there be additional expenses for the planning board to review the permit? And from there, I also went on to ask if there would be additional expenses for the DPW, who I believe are logically the people who should be administering it, but that's not the choice. It all goes into their storm sewer system, the MS4, so-called municipal separate storm sewer system. So will there be costs for them? And then finally, will there be costs for the building inspector? And if this is to go forward for our town meeting, the voters need to be told the truth about what it's to cost under all three headings. So the question for the planning board is out there. And I would hope well before the town meeting and really as soon as it's practical, you'd have an answer.
Okay, I think I can answer some of that right now, Toby. First of all, the, what should be built into the bylaw, which I understand is, is that the planning has the ability to retain a consultant to examine any, any plan that meets the stormwater management threshold. And that, and that consultant will be paid from funds escrowed from the applicant. So that won't be a cost to the planning board. I don't know if I agree with you that every stormwater management plan results in water that will be in sewer system. I don't think that is necessarily requirement. It's more the square footage of the disturbance, whether it goes into the down sewer system or not, it may or may not. But, you know, I don't think it's going to cost the town another nickel. It's just going to be more time for the planning board members to review things. That's, that's my understanding. There's not going to be any additional cost on our end. And as you know, we're all volunteers, so we don't charge. Anyway, any other comments? Diane Vella?
Hi, I just wanted to congratulate you on getting the letter of authorization of the interim. We've approved and approved the MBTA district. Your action plan was approved. And, you know, that's the next step. And, and so I just really appreciate you being on top of it, doing the action plan and getting it approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diane, can you state your name and address for the record for me?
Yeah, Diane Vella, 17 King Street.
Thank you.
In fact, we've already heard from one other community, like, how did you guys do this? You know, funny, here we are, a little Rockport. And so, anyway, that's, yeah, it was nice to get that, that letter. I was not expecting it, but I'll take it, you know?
Take it.
Denise, you had your hand, you want to raise your hand? Can you, you're raising it, okay?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for taking my comment. I was just listening to the Gloucester Planning Board hearing on the floodplain overlay district. And one of the things that the planner said was that any community that is affected by a new map issued by FEMA, a new floodplain map, has to update their zoning bylaws to reflect the FEMA requirements with respect to floodplain development. So it sounds like Rockport will need to also look into adopting a floodplain overlay district. And I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah. That's, okay, I'm writing it down right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? No other comments, okay. Here we go, number two. Approval of the minutes for June 2nd, June 16th, July 7th, July 21st, August 4th, and August 18th. Now, the reason why we've got, you know, five sets of minutes to approve is because we haven't had minutes done for a very, very long time, meaning they haven't been prepared. They've been recorded, but they haven't been prepared by someone in, you know, typographical form. And we do have someone now who is doing our minutes and is catching up. But in the process, she's working off of the, you know, the recordings, thank God for those, and is doing the minutes from those. So she's, based on what I just saw today, she, she should be caught up with us. I'd say by the end of this month will be current. But at the, but now we've got all these minutes to approve. And I, I have to say, I, I read them over today. I had a couple of comments, not, you know, punctuation typing or typos, but I had some substantive comments on a couple of them. And guess what? I left them at home. So I'm sitting here now without my minutes to review. And I apologize. You know, I don't know, anybody have any thoughts about how you want to deal with this? I mean, obviously, we don't want to spend 45 minutes going over minutes. And my suggestion is unless there's something like really messed up that is, you know, important, then let's just let it fly.
So you're, Mr. Chair, you're, you're suggesting then that we just table this for another, for the next meeting?
Well, you know, I can't, unfortunately, I can't be of help. I hate to do that because by the next meeting, we'll have more minutes. So what do you, what do you folks think? I have no strong opinion one way or another.
I have trouble remembering which meeting was which. And, you know, when we get into little measurements of accuracy, we, any one case, we may have talked about it three different meetings. It's a lot, you know, difficult to do it with the way we usually do it.
A lot of what's in the minutes is it's, they're not things that are gonna, are critical to the outcome of some application or something. But they're just maybe, they attributed, for in my case, for example, some, some language is attributed to me. And I know I didn't say it. I think it was Tom Mekus who said it, but the minutes aren't clear. But, you know, in terms of the bigger picture, it doesn't matter, really, because it just doesn't. Now, you know, we can wait and we'll have three more sets of minutes to do the next time, or we can just go through these and put them behind us. I, again, I, I'm leaving it up to you guys to figure out.
You know, it's personal preference for me. I think we ought to go through the minutes that we have. And, you know, I agree with you, Jason, that we've, we've got some minutes that have some, well, no substantive changes required. It's just, you know, neatening them up as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I hate to approve them as is. I think we should either go through and make whatever seems substantial or table it.
Of course, Bob Simmons isn't going to be of any help.
No, he'll, he'll be able, he'll be able to.
He can relive, he can relive his three months with him.
Well, look, let's do that then. I'm fine with that. Like I said, there are a couple of things, questions I had, but they're not, they're not things that are going to be, gee, if I don't change that, it's going to really get the wrong impression. Doesn't matter. And they're ambiguous anyway. So at the end of the day, it could be, well, I said it or somebody else said it. You can't really tell, but so what, you know?
Jason, there's, there's one, one item that I think might be critical. On the August 18th minutes, it's got a whole section about the signs determination. And since that's a subject of legal matter, I think we ought to listen to the recording and make sure that is exactly what happened.
All right, I, I think that's a good suggestion. Let's just leave that out because that could be critical.
Yeah. I'm in, I'm in Harry's position there too, because in that paragraph, I say things I don't recall.
Yeah.
Saying, I too think.
That was me, you know? So let's, let's leave the August 18th out. I know Simon, you know, went, went on before that too. But why don't we just start with June 20th, June 2nd? Does anybody have any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I do.
Okay.
Under number three, SPR hearing, Ian Whitehead, 6 Stonehaven Lane. I'm going to say it's, I think it's the third paragraph down. There is a reference, no, I'm sorry, it's in the first paragraph. PS Design, Inc., that should be consistent with the rest, Treehouse Design.
Okay.
Yeah.
What does it say now? What, what does it say?
It says PS Design.
Oh, okay.
That's in the first paragraph. And then I, I'm going to see if I can find where this is. There's a reference made to a site train. No, I don't think we have any tutus on the site, so I don't know what that reference is.
It's, it's 12 lines up from the bottom. The site train.
This is same hearing, Whitehead?
Yes.
It should be, should be terrain.
Terrain, okay.
Okay.
I knew the architect would figure it out.
Okay, not train.
That's all I have.
Right.
I had a punctuation thing that I just thought was, is kind of true on all of them, this use of who's present with the colon and the semicolons. It makes it look like, like in this one, Harry's the vice chair. I just think for the record, it, no reason to use a colon in that very first line. I advocate that title. It just should be another semicolon, the vice chairman goes to Tom.
Right. Okay.
One more thing in those minutes.
Yeah.
On page six, item six, CPC appointment, final paragraph.
Yeah.
Says Mekus will attend as long as Zoom is still in play.
That got repeated, right?
That's about MAPC. It's out of place, but I don't want it to make it look like I will attend CPC because that's not what I'm assigned for. So we either strike it there or say Mekus will attend MAPC as long as Zoom's in play.
Okay, Mek. Okay, military 10 MAPC.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the second. Uh, okay. Let's just move on and we'll approve, we'll vote on all of them after we're done. June 16th. Any additions, corrections, or deletions?
No.
I wasn't present, so I'm going to have to abstain on this.
Okay. And anybody else? Otherwise, we move on to July 7th. July 7th.
Under number six.
Yeah, okay.
Go to the last paragraph under number six. Last sentence, it reads essentially, you refer to the housing needs assessment. Housing needs assessment should be capitalized. But housing inspection should read housing production plan.
So wait a second, housing needs assessment.
Yeah.
Capitalized. Okay.
Housing inspection should be housing production plan capitalized.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
My, my name spelled wrong at the top of page two.
And there's too many As in Arsenian.
All right. All right, we'll move on. Nothing else on July 7th, July 21st. Comments, corrections?
Page two, oh, sorry, Tom. On page two, under but middle of the page, when it gets to cut, it went to preservation committee. There's something that says the same quorum from planning board. I don't know where that's from. And I think it should be struck. There's no, no quorum problem.
Are you on August 4th? I don't see that.
We're on July 21st.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, July 21st.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds strange.
So just, I think we can just strike same quorum from planning board.
Okay. The other July 21st. All right, well, if there are none other there, let's move on to August 4th.
This is the one that had the wrong date on the top.
What do you mean wrong date?
It says August 18th.
Oh. What?
Mary.
Well, there's August 18th and there's August 4th, right?
Right, right. And there's, and there's two that have August 18th at the top.
Okay, August, one of them is actually August 4th.
Right.
The file name is correct.
Yeah, right. It's just what's written on the actual document.
Okay. Anything for the August 4 minutes?
Yeah, at the top of page two, first paragraph, the final sentence. It says, policy to not include elected positions. I don't think that's, I wish that were the case. But it was actually, it should say, policy includes elected positions.
This is related to your situation?
My three-card monte position.
Will never be House Majority Leader.
I can't get enough votes. So the final sentence there, if it just says policy includes elected positions, that would be accurate.
Yeah, yeah, it should, right.
Take out the word two as well because we're, we're not influencing the policy. It's a statement of what the policy is.
Yeah.
Policy rank.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for August 4th? All right, August 18th, we'll just, let's just put that on hold.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to really focus on that too.
Yep.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd, July 16th, July 7th, July 21st, and August 4th. That's corrected.
So moved?
Moved by, by Peter, roll call vote. Tom, I, Peter.
Hi.
Harry.
I'm with the proviso that I'm abstaining from the June 16th minutes approval.
Yeah, Harry abstains. And Bob? Well, you know, you couldn't because you.
I guess I abstain too.
You have to abstain too. All right, good. So we got through that for the amount of quickness. So let's go to the next item, ANR. Ben Alkin, this was before us, once before, there appeared to be a discrepancy between the, the kind of detailed area and the, it's a small transfer of property. I can, whoever's here, I think it's Ms. DeCarlo, can you explain what you did here? You withdrew it and then you resubmitted it or?
So good memory. My name is Jennifer DeCarlo. I'm here from Heenan Associates. I'm an attorney and here in connection with this in our endorsement application. So good memory, I was here at the last meeting trying to get endorsement from the board of this ANR plan. And there was concern at that meeting that the, the small isolated sort of depiction of the area in question, the shape of it didn't quite match with the area that's, that's actually being turned into this parcel A. And just to refresh everybody's memory, the whole point of this is that we have two neighbors. The owner of 6 Saratoga Court has a paver walkway and just a very small portion of it encroaches on to 81 Thatcher Road. And so there's been some ongoing litigation in Land Court. And the parties have chosen to come to this amicable resolution where parcel A will be created. It's, it's tiny, it's 53 square feet and it will ultimately be conveyed to the owner of 6 Saratoga Court. So that now their paver walkway is going to be within the confines of their own property. So that's the context of this is before you. And, and I, you know, I shared the concern when it was brought to my attention by the board that the shapes of the, how, how do I describe this? The detail and then what's on the, the actual plan didn't quite match up. And I consulted immediately afterwards with the surveyor. And he indicated to me that it, the shape doesn't match because this is such a small area, it's 53 square feet. And the lines in some areas are so close that it would be impossible to show in that detail the dimensions, and that's really the whole point. And so he, I'm just going to read from his email to me saying it is, it's the same, but it's not to scale as stated in that detail. But it's to clarify the configuration of the lines. And he says, if we were to show the detail to scale, we would need to blow it up 20 times or more to be able to see what is going on. And it would not fit on a sheet of paper that is of a size that can be recorded. He indicated this is an extremely common practice when the scale of the plan isn't able to reflect the configuration of the new line. In this case, the new line is so close to the old one in some spots that it all bleeds together at any scale that would fit on a 24 by 36 inch sheet. So the point of the detail is just to show the math, the monuments, and the fact that the two lines, which appear to be on top of each other at the, at the scale used on the plan, the one inch equals 20 feet scale, that they are actually two different lines. So he confidently responded, these areas are the same. And, and I feel, I felt confident and relying on his representation. So, so the bottom line here is that we're not creating a buildable lot. We're simply just creating this parcel A, carving it out of 81 Thatcher Road. And then ultimately, if and when this plan is endorsed by the board, we'll record it and then parcel A will be conveyed to the owner of 6 Saratoga Court. That's my long-winded explanation.
Thank you. Peter, you were the one who raised this.
Yeah, I was the one that questioned it. I think the word scale is a little differently used. The, what's happened is the shape has been changed when it's shown at a different scale for exactly those reasons. So there's room to write on either side of the line. So it makes an odd-looking piece of property just floating out there in the drawing. It's nothing regular shape. But it's true, to draw it at a larger scale with the same shape, the lines would still close on themselves. I, I think we're, I certainly was overly sensitive because this just sounds like the classic, your fence is on my yard.
Yes.
And to clean it up with just a matter of a half an inch to spare, you know, seems worrisome if it's not accurate. So you're going to have to look at one drawing and measure from the other drawing, but not the end of the world. And I'm happy with it.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments about this? So you resubmitted the maps, right?
Yes, first of all, let me just say that Mary, the secretary, is unbelievable. She was very patient with me and I really do, I wanted to say on the record, I really do appreciate her assistance. What we did was she had me, all of the, the plan stayed the same, the application stayed the same. She had me submit a new cover letter that indicated everything was remaining the same and being resubmitted.
All right.
Jason, can we be, I want to be completely clear, the detail is the correct?
Detail is the correct dimensions and the plan is the correct shape.
Oh.
You want to see it?
It's incorrectly drawn.
Can I try and share again?
I mean, the, the angle between L1 and L2 is oblique in one case and opposite in the other. It's really drawn wrong.
And I brought this to the attention and I think it's because, well, this is, the explanation is that the new line is so close to the old line in some points that it all, it all bleeds together at any scale that would fit on a single 24 by 36 inch sheet.
Yeah, Tom, if you look at the one on the, the bigger one, the parcel A detail, line L4, and then along the 80-foot line, that's the baseline line L6, the two of them are almost on top of each other when you do the math. You couldn't, they don't, so his case is they don't distinguish. So he's pulled them apart. And for some reason, in doing so, he's made L1 and L2 an odd shape.
Yeah, I was not concerned about L4 and L6. I think L1 and L2 have the wrong angle. And, yeah, maybe that's okay, but you gotta see, see the detail.
Assuming you build it new, assuming you build it with the numbers from the detail, it should look like the plan. Otherwise, we'll be back in Land Court.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a good point, Peter. You know, this, this is a resolved, this is a resolved litigation. If, if the parties are not happy with this, then there'll be more litigation.
But they seem to be happy, right?
It sounds as though they're happy and it's such a minor, minor. uh, transfer of property. And, and you know, we did, I mean, I think your point was well taken. We did bring it to the surveyor's attention. If there had been a mistake, I'm hoping that he would have been corrected it. But what he did is give an explanation as to why it was done the way it was done. And I just, you know, I don't know how we can kind of second guess that at this point.
I'd be curious to hear the thoughts of our newest member, given his background.
Has he seen it?
I don't know.
Can I share?
I, I did, I did see it last, last meeting. Yeah, on the screen and I also noticed the, the difference there. But I think as long as there's dimensions on the, the larger scale plan, they've got that area figured out.
Is my sharing working?
Should be okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I've just got.
So the part I highlighted in yellow is the real thing that needs to be built. You can see L four and L six, right on top of each other. They, they must be inches apart. So even at thirty-six inches, it would probably be messy, but I'm just a little surprised. You know, at least try to show what Tom pointed out was the angles going in the right direction. It looks like two different things.
Right.
I, I, I took your drawing and apologized and just blew them up to be the same size. So this is the actual detail and I blew the one up from the plan just to get to the same. And you can see how you can't tell what line is what.
Right. So I think, I mean, I, I would say that since there's bearings and distances on every leg there, that could easily be reconstructed if there was a, some kind of weird problem later on and could get resolved geometrically through that. But yeah, I, I see why they did it now because it's a, it's over eighty feet and it's separated by, like you said, Peter, by inches probably in some places.
In some places, right?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with it too. I would say it's, it's a little bit of an oddball.
Yeah, it is odd, but I, I think you're, you know, the fact is that there are bearings. And that's gonna guide what the actual dimensions are. They're irrefutable. So, yeah, now, Bob, you weren't here, the, no, this is your first meeting, right? So you were, you heard the last one, but you, would you participate?
Uh, yeah, no, I did. I would, I was, I was, I was officially, I was officially sworn in and hours before that meeting.
Okay. Alright, well, let's, let's kind of try to put this to bed. Does anybody have a motion to approve?
We approve it.
McKenna A and R.
I'll make the motion to approve the A and R Van Alkin and McKenna Junior eighty-one Thatcher Road, map twenty-five, lot eighty. To approve that plan is submitted.
Okay, motion by Harry, second.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, roll call vote. Peter.
Hi.
Tom.
Let me state, the, the engineer in me would like to see the angles done correctly, but I will accept the practicalities of the architects.
Meaning you're.
So I.
I, okay. Bob.
Hi.
And Harry.
Hi.
Right, and I'll vote in favor. All approved, A and R is approved. Mr. Carlo, we all have to sign this. And the Mylar, if you can believe, we're still doing that in the twenty-first century. So I give it a few days, next week, maybe sometime. Mary will let you know when it's all been signed.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, your time. And also, just to, if I can provide some assurance, I will give your feedback to the surveyor in a professional manner because I, I do agree with you. I think it would be a lot easier to deal with this if we had shapes that sort of generally matched. So I will definitely provide that feedback. Thank you very much.
Hey, you're welcome. Alright, uh, next A and R is Joseph Parity seventy-six Pigeon Hill Street. Everyone who's taken a look at this, this is essentially a lot line adjustment. It's moving the line in one lot, making the lot bigger to make apparently, apparently not that it's material, but make room for a swimming pool. It doesn't look like it adversely affects any lot by make, changing this line. Who's here on behalf of the applicant? Nobody?
Who's iPad?
Isn't somebody called in also?
Uh, Monsieur Denise has her.
Denise, you.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the individual dialed in on a phone is, is actually the applicant.
Or is that?
And they're, they're muted, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll request that they be unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Joseph Parity seventy-six Pigeon Hill Street. Good evening. Thank you for looking at this.
Why don't you tell us what's going on here?
Okay, so as you can see, the old lot line is non-conforming as it is. It's going through my shed on the left-hand side and we have two young children and we wanted to surprise them with a swimming pool. We called the town. We are aware that there are ten-foot setbacks that need to be addressed surrounding the pool, which if we kept it, the lot line where it is at this time, it would push the pool for, closer to the house, which we're trying to avoid. We would like the back. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. Parity, you don't really need to address the pool with us. That's a building inspector issue later. But what, I mean, just to try to keep things simple here, all we're concerned about is the movement of the lot line. Really?
Right. And that's what, that's, that's what I was getting to. I was just, we wanted the pool to line up with the shed just for, for looks, so everything looks correct. And if we could push back that lot line, it will address the rare setbacks. And it would also clean up that non-conforming line that's going through the existing shed as it is. So I'm just looking for permission to move that lot line back a little bit.
Yeah, when you say back, you mean that would be in the direction of.
North.
I, Hillside Road, kind of north.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So you're basically moving a lot line. You're not, you're, and just a little.
You want to share again?
What was that?
I wanted to go into share.
Oh, share, right, share.
Can you see it now?
Yeah, thank you. You see the, the lot to be, we had this discussion at our last couple of meetings ago where someone was calling a parcel, really wasn't a buildable parcel. They were calling it a lot. And that's where a lot of confusion comes in, even though your, your notes on your map make it pretty clear that lot to be is not to be a, you know, buildable lot. The fact is that it's, it's not even a lot. It's a parcel that is being created to be basically to become part of seventy-six Pigeon Hill Road. But that's, you know, look, it's on the map. It's been done. So I understand what you're doing here. I think everyone does that you're basically moving a line and actually making it even with an existing line on seventy-eight Pigeon Hill Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I know the last one we just went through actually did refer to it as just a parcel.
It's correct.
I think in, in the new, the new regulations, we're a little tighter about defining lot. Because even in the questionnaire, you're asking, do you create a new lot? Does a lot have access? It opens up all those frontage things. So if in the future we can get rid of it, it shouldn't stand in the way of the drawing, I don't think.
It'll be good to get rid of. We're not, we're not creating a lot here. We're just moving a line by, you know, basically moving a line, you know?
So a parcel of land goes from one to the other.
Yeah.
Do you own the back?
I do.
Okay.
So you.
When you say the back, you mean map three, lot eleven, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is also mine.
Good. Anybody have any questions?
Looks good to me.
Yeah. No questions, no comments. Anybody have a motion to approve the, the A and R? Submitted on behalf of Mr. Parity.
I move to approve the subdivision of land.
Okay, well, that was Peter's motion, seconded.
Go ahead, Bob. It's your turn.
I seconded.
Seconded in by Bob, roll call vote, Tom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
I'll vote in favor. Applic, the subdivision where the, is approved as an A and R. And Mr. Parity, it'll be probably sometime next week before everyone signs this. So Mary will give you a call. Or call her.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Take care.
You're welcome. Alright, next item on the agenda is the item five, Rockport Community Land Trust in connection with its potential CPC application. Appearing on this tonight is Denise Donnelly, who is also the liaison from the Select Board to our board. And Denise had asked me if she could address this issue to the planning board. I said, you know, please do, we'll hear, you know, what she has to say. This is not in her, this is not, and correct me if I'm wrong Denise, I don't think I am, but this is not in your capacity as a select board member. This is in your capacity as a member of the Land Trust.
That's correct. Yes. And if I may request that Jeff Jeweler also be unmuted. He's part of our working group.
Okay, sure.
So thank you very much for making the time for us to present this to you. You, you are correct. I'm doing this in my capacity as a, a citizen of Rockport, not as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I started working on this probably about two years ago. When I was actually on the planning board, I started working on, looking into how to address the, start to address the affordable housing challenge in Rockport. And over the course of two years, we kind of winnowed our group down to about five people. Jeff is one of those individuals who's been working with us. And after a lot of research, we decided to narrow our focus on what's called a community land trust, which is a term of art. And it's a specific kind of legal vehicle and focus on developing single and two-family homes in the town of Rockport for working families. I know that the housing production plan will look at demographics and will kind of help the planning board and, and the town to identify and articulate where the housing needs are greatest. But we're a small group of volunteers and we really needed to narrow our focus into an area where we felt we could make a difference. And we were concerned about the fact that it's so difficult for working families such as people who work for the town, the DPW, teachers, police officers and other working families to afford to live in Rockport and raise their families here. So we are very narrowly focused on that specific need. And we've been working with the consultant through the generosity of a grant from the Community Preservation Commission over the course of almost a year now. And we also have had the support of pro bono legal work from the Suffolk University Transactional Law Clinic. And they are about to send on our application to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to the IRS to get us officially approved as a five oh one C three and as a Massachusetts nonprofit. In the meantime, we set up a funding vehicle through a fiscal sponsorship with the Essex County Community Foundation because we've applied, submitted a proposal to the Methodist Church to see if we can become the owners of the Methodist Church downtown, which has closed and convert that into affordable housing. All of this is to say that we're submitting a proposal to the Community Preservation Commission, which is due in early February um, to request funding for our land trust so that we can begin to go about the process of looking for properties, developing properties and starting to support working families in the town of Rockport. I'm sure I've left stuff out, Jeff, so please fill in the blanks for me.
Wow, I'm, I'm not sure that there's much more to add unless there's questions. Jeff Jeweler ninety-nine Marmion Way. I applaud the work that Denise has done independently. This is nothing to do with her duties as a select person. And the people that so far I've had the pleasure to work with on this committee are diverse and motivated for no other reason than to help the town continue to maintain a tapestry of age and types, et cetera. So I very, very much look forward to seeing these first projects get off the ground. Really, really happy to have Denise leading this right now. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. And, and so all of this is to request, one of the things that the Community Preservation Committee asks people who submit proposals to do is to solicit letters of support. And so we already have a letter of support from, I don't know if everyone is familiar with Bob Gillis. He used to be the president of the Cape Ann Savings Bank. He's now the chair of the Board of Trustees for Harbor Lake Community Partners. He's issued, given us generously given us a letter of support. And they also ask for us to go to whatever appropriate town committee to request letters of support. And that's why I'm here tonight to see if the planning board would consider giving us a letter of support for our application to the CPC. I'll stop for questions. I also want to address, I know there's a lot of interest in the town's Affordable Housing Trust and I'm happy to address that as well. But I, I guess I should stop for questions first unless you'd like me to talk about that.
I, I have two questions Denise. One is, when you say a letter of support, what are we, I mean, obviously what you're doing, the goal is in line with creating more affordable housing in the town, which of course the planning board has been trying to do that through some rezoning. So that goal is certainly supported. So the first question is, what would we be supporting? What are you looking for from the CPC that our letter could be helpful on? That's number one. And the second thing is, you know, and you already alluded to it, which is the, the, this by, I guess there's a bylaw actually in the town that creates a land trust, a town land trust. And maybe explain the difference between what your land trust is and what the town, briefly, obviously. And then also whether there would be any negative impact on the town land trust if, or any, by any letter of support, supporting the private land trust that you're involved.
So, sure. So let me answer the first question first. All I'd be asking from the planning board is for you. All I'd be asking from the planning board is for you to say that you support our application for funds from the Community Preservation Committee. Um, and, um, as to the second question, the Board of Select, so I'll put my other hat on, the Board of Selectmen hat. The Board of Selectmen have to meet and, and decide how they want to proceed with respect to the Affordable Housing Trust, it has not been operational for any number of reasons for the past number of years, and I won't go get into that now. But I think we can all agree that the affordable housing problem in Rockport is big enough that it, it certainly would be helped by having any number of bodies and efforts by, um, individuals and citizens supporting it. Our housing trust is very narrowly focused, as I said, on working families in single and two family homes. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to see the Affordable Housing Trust in town work at scale. Um, there is very little state and federal money available in support of home ownership, whereas there are many grants on the state and federal level available, um, for developing affordable housing that is rental housing. Um, and so I would like, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, to see the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, once the Board of Selectmen, if, assuming that it does get it up and going at some point in the future, I'd like to see, because the town is going to be in a better position to apply for those federal and state funds once we get our grant writer on board, um, than our small volunteer-run affordable housing trust. So to my mind, that's the distinction. They're not mutually exclusive by any means, I'd like to see us complement one another in what we do. Um, and if there's overlap, even better. As I said, the problem is big enough that it certainly could use all the help it could get, can get in addressing the problem. Does that answer your question, Jason?
I think it does. Um, anybody else have any questions? Any discussion among the board members about the request to issue a letter of, basically a gen, what I understand it, general letter of support to the CPC for the, uh, housing trust, uh, to the, for the Rockport Community Land Trust, their application for funding. And, and as I mentioned to Denise, um, when she first brought this up, I said, we have to be careful because, you know, and it's already happened in the past, people or groups have come to us for, oh, give us a letter of support, we want the planning board to support us. And, you know, we, we really have to be very tailored and very discriminating in this, otherwise, you know, we're not, we're not an endorsing agent, we don't, we don't want to just go out and endorse. So, but, you know, you're, the, the way I see it is that your goals and the board's goals, and I mean concrete goals, not aspirational, not, you know, let's, let's be, um, let's change the climate change in the world or something, you know? That's very, very broad, I mean, this is very narrow and tailored, um, that we can do that without getting ourselves into trouble later by saying, well, you, you gave a letter of support to this group, why didn't you give a letter of support to that group, or, you know? That was my concern. So, I, but I, let you guys wanted, you want to discuss it, let's discuss it. Otherwise, we'll just vote on it.
I'm in favor of the letter.
Is there any indication of the amount of grant that would be requested?
So, um, we have not yet settled on an amount, the, the group is meeting later this month to review the draft proposal. We drew a dra, review a draft, um, operational and development budget that our consultant is working on. Um, so we'll have a better idea toward the end of the month as we, um, work to finalize our proposal. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a number for you right now.
Yeah, it, it might be nice to know that, to be fully in support of this, to make sure it's in proportion to what's available.
Um, so every, the amount available varies every year. Um, this year it was an excess of one point five million. Um, in conversations that I've had with the CPC, they have indicated that they're very eager to support affordable housing because they've had so few opportunities um, to do so in the past. Um, and, and so we expect to ask for quite a bit of money, uh, we just don't have a, a number, yeah, but given the housing prices in Rockport, I, I think you can use your imagination. Um, we're not going to ask for the whole budget, obviously, but we're going to ask for a big number.
The entire budget right now would only buy one or two houses, so.
Not, yeah, if that, right, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, you know, there's, there's money that hasn't been spent because things went awry in the last few years. And the state's given us more money recently. And, uh, and we have heard from the public at the planning meeting in November, um, that the distribution could shift back to affordable housing to meet the most number of goals. And I certainly think that if there's anything in the planning board's work on ADUs and allowing two families and on the MBTA overlay district, they're all focused on affordable housing or strategies, and I agree with you, we have to do every single one of them. This is not the kind of crisis that we just argue about which one's the answer.
Right, right.
If I, if I could just, uh, give you my two cents on, um, the first opportunity that, um, has been presented to us, uh, really as we've been getting off the ground, which is just amazing how much work has been done in such a short time, but this Methodist Church, which by the grace of someone, has been put into our lap as an opportunity. I- if you, if, if we all know where that located, across the street from the post office, it's a wonderful structure, it's in great shape. Um, it was burnt, it was rebuilt. The, the guts of that building itself structurally could easily, relatively easily be converted into two wonderful living units. The alternatives that could very well happen, a parking lot or something else going on, to me seems, write down the reason why this more nimble, smaller group to take on something like this, um, makes sense right now in this town to try to get this up and running. I, I myself, oh, have to figure out the difference between one type of affordable housing and another, and large scale and small scale and harbor lights and all these different things. And I think the word affordable gets thrown around and it, it, it means different things to different people. To me, what we're doing is we're, we're creating obtainable housing because the trust is going to own the land and the buyers of the houses are going to be motivated to be able to put their equity and sweat into the property and eventually get something back out of that while we own the land, while the trust owns the land, not with the trust owns the land. So it, it is another compliment to the other ways that we're trying to get affordable housing in town. And I think, uh, back to this in, initial first project as an example, it would be a shame if, um, that particular structure would end up somehow finding another, um, I'd say less attractive use, um, than housing two wonderful families that could maybe bring kids into the community or maybe do something to continue to add to, uh, the tapestry, so to speak, so. I just want to put in perspective that project, and when we talk about dollars, Tom, um, it could be substantial, the first amount being asked for, but, um, visualize that property in, right now in real terms as a potential for two younger professional families, maybe some of them work in town, maybe they are from town, but at, can't, don't work in town, whatever, but just filled with, with family, and that's what we're trying to do. So that's my two cents on why, um, I'm involved and why I think the dollar amount that we may be asking for may seem substantial, but it's going for a great cause, it stays in town, it's an investment in our community now and in the future, so.
Thank you, Jeff, and the only thing I would add is, we're not looking solely to the Community Preservation Committee to fund our work. We also have members of our group who are, um, ready, willing and able and positioned to do individual fundraising. Um, and so that's another effort that's underway, I, I don't know if you had a chance to check out our website, that I should, asked Mary to share the link and our one-page kind of marketing sheet. Um, so we are well on our way to kind of really getting this moving and, and we just are looking to the CPC to kind of give us that initial push. And fingers crossed, I hope that they decide to send the, the church our way. Um, but, um, we're ready and we have a lot of momentum and as Jeff said, a lot of commitment.
I did look at your website and I commend you for having in the footer copyright twenty twenty-three, a lot of people don't have that yet. I, I do have two other questions.
Yeah.
Can I assume that whatever you end up with will not automatically, but by definition, let's say, uh, meet the definition of affordability that the state has that would count against our ten percent quota?
So the goal is to do that, there are two competing concerns. Um, yes, we would like to do that in order for the housing to count toward that number, the DHCD number. There's a requirement. Um, we, we are very focused on Cape Anne and, and trying to help Cape Anne families. At the same time, we want to open up our opportunities to anybody who wants to live on Cape Anne. Um, you can only allow up to seventy percent of your, um, applicants to be local if you want to qualify for up to the, the ten, counting toward the ten percent. So I don't know if I explained that very clearly, but I think with the first property, we may look to be more local, but moving forward, our goal is indeed to, um, to meet the DHCD guidelines and to have it count toward the ten percent, yes.
Okay, and my second question is, is there any advantage to your having our letter of support now versus after your application is complete, which is next month, I think?
Uh, it's due in the first week in February, and if possible, I would like to have it be, to submit with my, with the proposal that we're, um, drafting. Would be my request.
Well, I'm in favor notionally, I, I just think, things I've been involved with CPC, we've always gotten letter of support after we have a firm proposal, so. What do others think?
Any thoughts on that?
My thoughts are that I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. Um, my feeling is that, um, things can change, it's highly unlikely that a 501(c)(3) application would be rejected, but again, I think from the standpoint of a, of a process, we should be following something of a process here and we should have an applicant with a specific request that we can consider as opposed to something that's you know, subject to at the, at the moment.
Let me just clarify if I may, Harry, we are, um, able to accept tax deductible contributions now through our fiscal sponsorship with the Essex County Community Foundation, so under the umbrella of their 501(c)(3) authority, and this is the same thing that Millbrook Meadow uses and many other smaller not-for-profits use. So irrespective of the IRS decision, we are already accepting tax deductible contributions and the CPC money, should our application not yet be approved by the IRS, would go into that special fund at the Essex County Community Foundation.
Uh, this is for both Denise and Jeff, I just have a question, this was what Tom kind of alluded to. Would it, let's assume we all agree, assume that, I don't know if that's the case, but let's assume it's agreed that a letter of support would be forthcoming from this board. Uh, is it, is it a letter of support that could be forthcoming after you've submitted your application? Or is there some reason why it needs to be now as opposed to then? When, you know, when we know what, what's in your application?
Um, so the CPC in their, um, instructions for submitting proposals specifically states that you should go to whatever the relevant committees are to request letters of support to submit with your proposal. Um, it sounds to me like the planning board would rather wait for our proposal to be drafted. Um, and that, by that time, we will have submitted the proposal, it, it's all coming together rather quickly. But, um, if you're not willing to, um, draft a letter, uh, supporting our efforts for affordable housing now, um, you know, you can certainly do one after we submit it to the, um, CPC.
Well, all I'm asking Denise is, and I'm not, I have no, you know, no preference and just if, would it make, would it hurt you, which no one, I don't think anybody wants to do for sure, would it harm your application to do, to do the letters for, after you've submitted it? Or would it strengthen it to have it before, I mean, that's, that's my only question.
I want to jump, I, I, if I may jump in here for a second. I believe that if the spirit of the planning board, um, is in favor in concept of what we're trying to do, then I believe that any sort of letter of support could reflect that and could possibly be either retracted or expanded post the application process. Because the notion really here is, do you like the idea or not? If we come to you and you say, oh, we don't think this is a very great, good idea at all, of course, we're not going to get a letter of support, we never would. If we could get something to show the CPC that it's, we, it's been discussed um, in, um, in general sense, we are supportive of anything like this and to, um, one other gentleman in your board's, uh, comments that, well, what if this doesn't happen, what, that doesn't happen? I'm pretty sure you could draft that letter to give yourself an out. And for us, the in, even if it's not a full in, would be very helpful than than the nothing or an out later that you can take if it doesn't work out, I, I, I really feel as though it, it, if, if we can get some sense of, 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 of support there, um, it would be help, it would help the cause. And I don't know if they can be drafted like that with, you know, given the situation, provided this or whatever, but, uh, any level of support, um, would be great. Before.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
All right, um, all right, well, I think we've, you know, kind of got all the, ran all the permutations of this issue. Uh, does anybody have any motion they want to propose in relation to their request for a letter of support?
I moved, we could bear a letter of support prior to the application, so it can be a portion of the, uh, so it can strengthen the application.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second to Peter's motion?
Um, I think I second that, yeah.
Okay, so there's been a-
I'd like, I'd like to amend that motion, please?
Oh, wait a second, we got a motion and a second. So if you want to amend it, uh, well, shouldn't we vote on this first?
No.
No, he gets to amend it first.
But, but then he needs a second to amend it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or we get to vote it down or up.
Let's hear the amendment.
We can, we can, we can vote on an amended motion.
You vote on the amendment.
Go ahead, make your, make- Go ahead, make your make your amendment. I don't want to, I get my Robert.
It's very simple. It's very simple. I just wish to amend the motion to state conditional. Conditional support based upon all required federal, state approvals, whatever you want to put in there. So it's just a conditional.
You mean generic, this letter of support is conditioned on the, you know, the the housing community land trust meeting, all other requirements, et cetera.
Subject to receipt of this, that, and everything.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I I don't know. I don't know all the conditions. I don't know if any was.
Well, that's that's the trouble of, you know, providing a letter of support. What are you supporting?
I think the idea is that
The concept.
Yeah, the concept. So, okay, so there's been a motion. There's been a second to the motion. There's been a proposal to amend the motion. Is there a second?
We can, if this is considered a friendly motion, which I believe it is, then the people who made the motion and seconded the motion can just accept it, which I do.
You do, okay.
Harry, I thought you were going to say conditional on seeing the application. That's not what you meant.
I don't think
You like the language in it.
I think I think what you meant, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that just put some generic, you know, kind of conditional language in the letter. Is that correct?
Exactly. I mean, you're asking, you're asking us to support something that we think we know we're supporting. We just want to make sure that, you know, what comes out of the wash is exactly that.
Okay, so you're saying, Peter, that you accept that motion?
Yes.
All right, so there we have it. There's the motion.
So we can discuss the whole thing and then we can vote.
Yeah, let's, any discussion?
I think it's good for the planning board to be out front on this.
Yeah, I sort of feel like we can craft a letter that talks about, you know, our overall goals for the town, providing more affordable housing. We might want to state in the letter that it as per the guidelines of the DHCP or whatever, or some other more tangible thing so that that works with what you all are trying to do and we might have to just coordinate that language with you all offline somehow.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can do, you know, something, I mean, obviously, I mean, it sounds like the consensus is everyone wants to support it. And so that's really good. And then we just want to say, well, you know, we haven't we just want to make our support conditional on whatever. And we can do that in a way, I think we want to do that. But it's it's in a way that doesn't say we're not really supporting. We obviously want to support it. And we can say, but obviously, you know, there conditions that have to be met, which we don't know have been what the status is at this point, but conceptually, we think it's a great idea, you know, something like that. So, you know.
Jason, you'll draft it with that sort of conditional language?
Yeah, yeah, I'm used to doing that kind of nonsense.
He never really retired as a lawyer.
I mean, we'll try and put it in English.
Yeah, I think I'll try to keep it in. No, here to sui generi, or you know.
Jason, this is pro bono, so keep it short. You're not getting paid.
All right, motion, roll call. I think we can move on here. Roll call, vote on the motion. Peter?
Hi.
Okay, Tom?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
I'll vote in favor. Letter of support forthcoming and what we'll do is, I think at our next meeting, and it'll have to wait till then, folks, that we'll draft a letter and we'll discuss it as a board and, you know, everyone will be get one that everyone's happy with, so.
Thank you very much. We're so great.
So much. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Great idea, guys.
Well, actually, in practice, we have a member on the CPC and Peter and his support is what directly goes to this.
Now you make it sound like a conspiracy.
And I'll tell him everybody, but Harry was happy.
At least, at least it's a transparent conspiracy, so. Thank you all very much. I've got to head off, but I appreciate it.
All right, next item is the just from putting it on here, January 18th, 2023, but who's counting? Is our special town meeting to for our warrant articles and the warrant articles are now published. They're out there. And, you know, we've got special town meeting that we're going to get ready for. I'm going to try to, I'm going to put together a very as succinct as I can be on a PowerPoint. Most of these things, 90% of this stuff has already come before the town. Of course, people won't remember that. Might be a different group of people this time. Who knows? But most of it's pretty mundane. Some of it may engender some some discussion. But we'll see. I am meeting tomorrow, yes, tomorrow with Bob Visnick, Mitch, and Alan Battistelli to discuss, not sure what, but it all is going to relate to the to the town, you know, the special town meeting on the 18th and how that's going to be structured and set up. I hope we will have a more streamlined meeting than we had on May 26th or 16th or whatever it was, because that was really a marathon and unnecessary, so. Yeah. Based on what reactions we got after our public hearing, which was basically a non-reaction, I would imagine these these proposals would be pretty non-controversial, but you know, you just never know what people are thinking and just never know. So
Jason?
Yeah.
I was wondering last time, you know, some people complained about getting that stat pamphlet of all the zoning regs in the back of the room, people who didn't download them ahead of time. I was wondering if your show might be something that could be made available? Or is it not self-descriptive enough? My PowerPoint show, your PowerPoint show.
In advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or in the back of the room at least.
You mean like as a printout or something?
Yeah, as a printout, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be.
Because I know people, people felt frustrated a little by just the awareness of how big of a document it was.
Well, that's, you know, that's another issue and that actually, that's something we'll discuss. I would love to do this in the auditorium rather than the gym, because the audio is better, the visual is better, the seats are more comfortable.
It's already booked for the gym.
Oh, well, then I guess that answers that. So we got the gym again, which is okay, you know, but yeah.
Anything that makes it easier for people, I think it's irritating enough, the whole subject. That we don't need to.
Yeah.
Makes it hard to understand.
That's what I don't want people to just be irritated and vote no just because they're irritated, you know. This stuff, we need to get this stuff done.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'll be happy to do that. I'm planning on drafting a letter to the Gloucester Daily Times, you know, just to kind of outline things for people who might not you know, have read anything else before. And, you know, hopefully tomorrow we'll work out any details that any questions that the ZBA Alan Battistelli has tomorrow, we'll work those out. And, yeah, that's a good idea.
Great, great.
Jason, I ran into some unexpected opposition today. In a conversation, someone stated that the so-called Nussenbolt stuff that we want to change
Yeah.
contains revisions to the parking requirements
Yeah.
that that are essential to implementing the transit oriented development. And that could be some of the opposition to it back in May and it could be continued in in this coming meeting.
Yeah, you know, that's, I guess, people can oppose the parking, but why? You know, like, even if we didn't have the TOVOD, the parking requirements are good. The ones that are there now are unworkable and require way more parking than anybody needs. You know, they don't provide for shared parking. I mean, these are I don't understand people who want to stay the way things are when the way things are are lousy. You know, it just, it makes no sense. It's like a fear thing, you know, they're just afraid and they want to keep it the same. But without really figuring out why.
Well, is it, is it true that we have to change the parking in order to make the TOVOD feasible?
Well, I mean, we don't have to do anything now. I guess we don't have to. But it would be, it's a waste of space to have the rigid formulaic parking rules that we have now. I guess we could have the TOVOD and keep the parking the way it is now. Wouldn't that be wonderful? I mean, you know, like, why? I don't get.
Well, regardless of why, I'd like to.
Saying that, sure, we could keep the parking the way it is. Do they want that really?
Are we talking about the numbers of parking required per unit? Or I thought most of what we were doing was we were changing for developments that had over a certain number. And we were changing which ones we approved and which ones ZBA approved.
Well, that, right, that's part of, that's always actually been the way it is. We have site plan approval over six or more spots. And and the ZBA has special permit authority for under that number, and that's the way it is now. So that that won't change. We have that in our site plan. Site plan review is triggered by six or more parking spots. So we already
And and don't, and don't we have to go through site plan review if they go in the TOV, the transit.
Well, there's site plan review there too, but there's
Yeah, so automatically we'll be doing the and so we can grant zero parking spaces per unit. If we wanted.
Well, we could do whatever, you know, we wanted, right?
Theoretically, yeah.
I hear what you're saying, Tom. I'm not annoyed with you at all, but I'm just, I'm just puzzled. Because you know, the parking is is a good thing regardless of the TOVOD. It's, we could still have a, some kind of development in the town of Rockport that's not a TOVOD that would require parking and the parking rules, the new parking rules would apply to that too. So.
I'm just trying to decouple these two.
Yeah, well, they're right.
That people don't oppose the parking thing because
Yeah, yeah. No, the two are, you know, it would be nice to have the parking separate from the TOVOD. Yeah, but it's not essential, essentially linked, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, well, that's a good point, though. Look for others, you know, whatever anybody's hearing, I'd appreciate, you know, see what kind of things are swirling around out there on rock, you know, face Rockport stuff or whatever, you know. It's all kind people, you know, people come up with all kinds of things that.
I haven't heard anything down here in South Carolina.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah.
We contain the problem.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's all I have to say about that. There's a little bit of work to do. Obviously, I'll share everything with you folks. You know, either before, either individually, you know, just to get your individual comments or there's not going to be time to do it before the next meeting, which will be actually the day after this, so. Okay.
Jason, is it possible for me to get that, that document? Is that up on the town website now that I can look at that? Or?
The warrant?
Yeah, the warrant.
Yeah, it's all posted, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's a scanned document and it's not searchable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jason sent out the individual articles as PDFs that are
I have the PDFs. I don't know, we can, Mitch and I, we can talk about that tomorrow. You know, about how to, maybe if there's a way to make it more accessible, you know, but about tomorrow. Yeah, it's there, though.
That's fine, yeah. I'll just, I'll just
It's not in the folder. How did we get the folder that has the individual separate ones? Did you send us a link or something?
I got that from MAPC provided that. So, but we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. Item seven, I have an appearance before the Board of Selectment or Select Board next Tuesday, really to talk about the future of multifamily housing zoning in the town of Rockport going forward as it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. I had drafted an action plan for the Housing Authority to approve. This is an interim plan. And it's required to be filed by the end of January of this year to preserve our right to be eligible for certain loan grants that are kind of the the carrots for this whole process. So I submitted this thing and you all have a copy of it, I believe. Anyway, it was approved. I was kind of shocked, but it was approved a few days ago with a nice letter. And so what that means is that we now have until January of 2024 to continue with our rezoning for multifamily housing. And under the formula that the state has come up with, we need to provide for in the town of Rockport for a minimum of 657 capacity for 657 multifamily units. And they 40% of those need to be within the half mile of the train station, which is pretty much all of downtown. So this is a lot. And what I, I did attend a seminar on this, which was hosted by Chris Clutchman, who some of you may know. And the Department of Housing and Community Development, she's in charge of this whole program. And I'll tell you something. They and I'm not putting a value judgment on it, but I can, I the state of Massachusetts had made, has made this process so incredibly complicated to comply that no one is going to be able to do this without hiring a consultant. You will not be able to to parse out all the multifamily units throughout your town without a consultant. Because a board like ours does not have the technical proficiency to do this. And that was pretty, made pretty clear at this seminar because there are all kinds of options to hire people. But the good news for us is that MAPC has, is actually undertaking an analysis of our zoning and how we can comply meet the the state requirements on their own without, you know, basically without charge to the town, which is pretty good for us. So they're, they're working on that as we speak. That's
Jason, are you saying we can't get a number for the number of multifamily units without outside help?
Correct.
We can't.
I would think the assessor's office would know this.
The assessor's office?
No, 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 they wouldn't know this.
They don't keep track of that?
They're not going to figure out how many, how much zoning we, zoning we need, how much how much existing multifamily housing we have, how much rezoning we need to comply with the state's requirement. Yeah, I don't think they'll be, they're not going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, to to come up with a number of six hundred and fifty-seven units, that wasn't a number that was just pulled out of the air. There is some formula that isn't being shared with us as to how.
Yeah, that's a formula with, uh, you know, housing and community development. They came up with this. Based on our, basically, it's based on the number of, we have four thousand, excuse me, four thousand three hundred eighty housing units, according to them. And I guess this is a formulaic percentage of those units that they use. So, for example, um, the town of, I'm just pulling, I'm looking at a very long list of all the towns in in the, you know, in Massachusetts, um, the town of, um, one, one we all know, Rowley, okay, commuter rail like us, they have two thousand, uh, they have a lot fewer housing units, two thousand four hundred and five, they have to come up with six hundred and one uh, zoning for, to allow for six hundred and one, um, multifamily housing units. They don't, this is just zoning. It doesn't mean anything has to be built. It just means we have to have the zoning that would allow for that capacity. That's all it means. It doesn't mean one multifamily unit will ever be built, just that we can allow for it. So.
Jason, I have a question.
Yeah.
Did, uh, did Chris, uh, state that, um, the Commonwealth is providing funds to cover? Uh, you know, that the town can apply for to cover the cost of some of these consultants?
Correct. Yes, we can. But what I was said earlier is that MAPC is already doing this. So do we really want to go through that whole process if we have, you know, a an entity that's familiar with our, familiar with our town, familiar with our zone? You know, who's already started on it, it seems.
Well, for for some in our community, that could represent the Trojan horse, MAPC.
Um.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if someone wants to go apply for grants, I'll I'll hand that off to them. They want, you know, I I think it's, um, but the point is, though, going to the Board of Selectmen, the reason I bring this up is because they, there has to be the political will to do this. You know, we we can mess around with the zoning, but if if people say, I don't care about these grants, we don't care that we're eligible because we've never applied for them in the past, which is the case. We don't care, just leave it the way it is. Then, that's, you know, that's what's going to happen. Because that's, that's really the only, the the downside to this is if we don't do it, we don't get, we can't apply for the grant monies. So that's, that's one of the reasons I'm, one of the big reasons I'm going to the Select Board Tuesday is to kind of raise this as an issue, and let's see what they say. You know, do we really want to be able to get these, do we really want to cut ourselves off from these grants in the future? And.
Well, I I believe it, I believe it runs deeper than that based on, you know, some of the, um, articles that have been published over the last sixty days.
You mean like communities that actually where their funding has been cut? Is that what you're talking about?
Their funding for affordable housing has been cut, believe that. Where their 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 budgets are being being cut by by the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
So that 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 isn't consistent with what we understood, but I mean, then you've got a town like Kingston, Mass. saying, well, the heck with it then. We we think we'll just close down the 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 train station and we won't be subject to all of this.
Yeah, no, there's, there's definitely pushback, um.
Yeah.
But I I am disturbed that it's so complex and and Chris, Chris Kushel and MAPC, he was the one who said, this has just been, the state has made this incredibly complicated. And if you went, if you, I have this seminar, I'll, I will send it to you. I have a link to it. You can listen to it, and if you come away with a different opinion, let me know. It was like.
I'll take your word.
Is there a, um, uh, Jason, is there a timeframe that MAPC said that they'll they'll come back to us with some results on this so that we can then if 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 they bring us back a bunch of, uh, malinformed a malinformed plan because they don't really know Rockport as well as we know it? Um, would we have time to engage in consultants and grants and things like that?
Yeah, that's a good question, Bob.
Make it a smarter, uh, answer.
I don't know the answer to that, but I will follow up on that and ask them what their right timeline is on this, so. You know, we can, we have a year, but a year goes quickly.
Yeah.
They have pretty good institutional memory here because they've been working on this for a couple generations.
Yeah. You're talking about MAPC?
MAPC has, yeah.
Yeah, no, they, look, Chris Kushel knows the zoning in the town of Rockport. He really does. Some people may, you know, not be happy with them, but on the other hand, we go out and hire another consultant, we might not be happy with them either. So.
The other thing I'm, uh, I was curious about in all of this is, is the, uh, is the MBTA land also up for um, possible housing use as well, the air rights?
Oh, I, that's a good question.
Air rights to the existing parking lots.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And the rail lines.
Yeah. Maybe you should call the MBTA tomorrow and see if you can get the answer to that.
So I don't know where their.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I don't know where their land starts and finishes.
Yeah, no, well, you can, um, it's actually, if you look at the, um, I was just, I was, that was flipped. I was, uh, uh, because I just know what would happen if you tried to address that with the MBTA, you know, you you, you'd have to know somebody there.
Yeah.
Um. If you look at the zoning map or the assessor's map too, it'll, it carves out their land pretty clearly.
Yeah.
I I heard it took a long, I heard it took a long time and a lot of effort just to get an easement into Evans Field. If that's an indicator of working with MBTA.
Well, generally, that's the case with an agency like that, is it takes, everything takes forever, you know? And.
Yeah.
But that that is a very good question, but we might be able to, I'm optimistic that with some creativity, we can come up with the zoning that we need to come up with here, you know?
Does our thirteen acres right now include the parking? Or did we skirt around it?
It it does not include their parking, no.
It's it's skirted around their parking.
Yeah, it does not include any of their property. Correct. Yeah. Okay, that's, uh, I have.
Which one of the meetings are you going to, the one on the tenth?
Tues- Tuesday, yeah, the tenth.
This coming Tuesday?
Yeah. Six, I don't know where I am. I I haven't seen an agenda yet. All right, that's all I have. Any any member items?
I have one thing. So I met with, uh, Christine Millhouse, who was a member of the Government Bylaw Committee, and we talked about the exterior lighting bylaw. That is to to update the residential and try to extend it to commercial and possibly municipal. Exterior lighting.
You know, that that's really good, Tom. Here's my question. Enforcement.
Yes.
That is a number one issue.
Well, Christine asked me what were, what were the issues that we had with the existing one, and I said, well, the main one is enforcement.
Yeah.
What Christine is doing is she's been, uh, looking into other municipalities and to what they do, and when I told her about the enforcement issue, she said she would specifically look into what other municipalities are doing for their enforcement. Um, I think we've heard of some municipality had like a lighting committee, but they didn't put everything onto the building inspector, so I don't know if that's good or bad. But, uh, we we recognize that as an issue and and, uh, hope to find something better than what we have now.
Okay, well, that's, that's exciting because there's really, it's really funny that we have a residential lighting bylaw, but no commercial.
Well, there is one in the zoning, but, uh.
No, I know, but no, no one that parallels the residential in the general.
And I, in my mind, light, light is light, and it doesn't matter who's doing it, it's got the same effects, so.
Of course.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any other member items?
Yeah, I got CPC, uh, um, Phil Crowde has stepped down, and Ruth George is, uh, is taking over as the new chair. And we have somebody from, uh, Kongkam on there now too. Um, so we'll be meeting just a couple of days before the, uh, before the town meeting to get ready for the new proposals to come in. And, um, the good news was the DOR released an extra twenty million just a few weeks ago. So our, um, allotment from the state this year is three hundred and sixty-five thousand. So that's, that's a good amount. I, and as Denise was mentioning, there's a backlog of money that we have sitting there as well. Um, the other thing was, like with our zoning, zoning changes, the state approved all the donations we did last year, all the designations. And what was else? Uh, oh, Atlantic Path, well, maybe Denise would know more about this. Selectmen and the Right of Way Committee and the McMillans have worked out a scheme that's gonna, gonna give the right of way for the public path, that the Atlantic Path on Phillips. That's it.
Any other, anybody else remember item? I have one. Okay, that's it. Uh, have we, the planning board has been sued by the Simeses in connection with our denial of the, um, in connection with our, our decision that the right of way adjacent to, not their property, somebody else's property was not suitable um, for vehicular traffic. And, um, you know, anybody can sue anybody for anything, and they have sued, and it is now in the hands of our town council, and that's really all I think we should discuss at this point. Uh, you all, you all have a copy of it since most of you, as was I, um, are named as individually, which I find curious on the, uh, as part of the complaint. I don't know if that's a, you know.
It's even more curious that I was also named and.
Yeah, well.
Booted in that group because it was submitted December twenty-eighth and I had no, no, any of these
Harry was named.
Things, so that could be one direction right there, I think.
Yeah, yeah, well.
That limits the amount of paperwork for our town council.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Have no standing.
Yeah, it's a strange, uh, you know, again, I don't want to say anything now, but we'll see how it plays out.
It's fun to be seen.
Yeah, well, it comes with the territory, you know?
Happy New Year, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's, um, that's my member item. Public comments.
Um, Mr. Chair, I have a hand from Diane Vell, uh, Toby Arsenian, and one from myself as well.
Okay.
Uh, who would you like to start with?
Well, let's do it in that order.
Right?
Hi, uh, Diane Vella on seventeen King Street. I had, uh, just a couple of comments and a question, um. I think because of the petitioners that signed the lawsuit, that there is a significant, some, uh, uh, um, pushback for the MBTA, um, and that they will stall things as much as possible, so I think that the town meeting, we need to be prepared to deal with those folks that come to the town meeting and start questioning the parking. I really understand what you're saying, Jason, and I, you know, why are they, why? But, you know, why do they sue? Why do they have a petition? And, uh, there was a lot of people that signed that.
Yeah, I know, I saw that. I was, I, you know, I I just hope that some of them really didn't know what they were signing because they would have had to read a three-page single-spaced letter to that they were supposed to sign their agreement with, which.
Well, but they, those are the folks that really seem to show up at the town meeting, and so I just, I I I expect pushback. Um, that it, that it might not be as smooth as we all would anticipate.
And I I agree with you.
So, um, and just think about how you want to address it, just to be forewarned. Um, al- also, I'm a little bit concerned about the, um, the proposal going into CPC from, um, the, um, land trust, uh, by naming it an affordable land trust. Um, it doesn't meet the criteria. They even said that they are not, um, they're not, um, committing to having affordable criteria. Uh, that word gets tossed around because we, um, you know, a lot of people want affordable housing, and I hear that they may eventually go there, but for this particular project, it's not perhaps really affordable. Their Jeff guy, I don't know who that is, said it was more like attainable housing, not affordable housing. So I just want to be concerned about using that terminology, um.
Well, that's not going to affect, that's not going to affect our, our letter, I mean, that.
No, I'm, I absolutely, I understand, and I really support what they're doing. I absolutely support what they're doing. I just think we need to be careful with our languaging because, uh, you know, there was pushback um, about, do I understand, and this is my question, is is that this organization, Denise, your organization has already had a grant from CPC?
Hey Diane, hold on, hold on. Whoa, 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 stop.
Okay.
Not, we have dealt with the business that was on our agenda. Now you're raising something that's really between you, Diane, and Denise, that is, that we're not involved with.
Okay.
You've already had that on the agenda, so if you guys, if you want to talk about this with Denise, um, you're certainly welcome to do that anytime, but.
Okay, I just, I don't, you know, I know that I can't make, ask a question when, you know, when, you know, I, only at the public comment, when you asked if there were questions, so I had that question, but I'm happy to call Denise, no problem.
Because, you know, it was, the name affordable was, was on the agenda. Um, you know, it's there, so if you, if you have a concern about that, then that's that's something that you should address with her. It doesn't have anything to do with us or us or or motion or anything. Okay?
Okay, all right, thanks. I mean, I procedurally, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Toby, I think Toby Arsenian is next.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite State. Uh, I don't think I agree with, uh, Ms. Vella about very much, but she's absolutely right about affordable and what gets called affordable and what doesn't. And certainly, it would not be appropriate to spend community preservation money, which is specifically geared to affordable housing for something that does not meet the criteria. Um, I think that, uh, you acted rashly in agreeing to, uh, write such a letter. The whole point of an application to the Community Preservation, uh, Committee is to apply for a given sum of money, and none was named, so basically, uh, you're endorsing a blank check, uh, which I would regard as folly. Uh, Tom Nikas mentioned the, uh, the, uh, the lighting bylaws, and I notice in the warrant that, uh, you're proposing to eliminate, uh, this few sorry shreds that we have in there about. about commercial lighting. Once he or you or the Government and Bylaw Committee, which said they weren't going to take up and write it for themselves, come up with something better to put in the code of bylaws, indeed, it would be appropriate to delete delete what you have in the zoning bylaw, but not before. I'm totally nonplussed by what Denise said about attending a conference on coastal waters rising or whatever in Gloucester. She said, we needed to have a bylaw. We do have a bylaw, and one of the things on your warrant are amendments to it, to which I object. The whole thing needs to be scrapped and rewritten from scratch. I could go on, but that's enough.
Okay. Yeah, well, okay. Denise, you you've had your hand up, and I know you feel as though you're, the trust has been attacked here. So
Just clarify something. Affordable housing, the term affordable is defined by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And so we are indeed complying with the definition as outlined by the DHCD. So I just want to clear up any misunderstanding. You know, there are lots of different definitions, but we are using the term. And for the purposes of the Methodist Church, we are looking to target individuals who start, whose income falls starting at eighty percent of area median income. So that's what we're using for that project. Should we be so lucky as to get it? I just wanted to clarify that. It is affordable housing.
Yeah, that does meet the definition.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
Rob. Just a comment from myself quickly, if you're so inclined, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I had a two-pronged thing. First of all, in regard to Tom Nikas's comment about enforcement as to a lighting bylaw, the town is currently in the process of starting to use a program called C Click Fix, which is a citizen request software, which allows various departments in town, the DPW and others, to be able to eat more easily field requests and be able to provide response on them. And there is a fairly robust code compliance opportunity with that as well. To put it plainly, being able to rat on your neighbors a little bit, if, you know, their lawn is too long, or if they have, you know, an abandoned car spewing antifreeze into, you know, a storm drain, things of that sort. So I think there would be an opportunity going forward to sort of allow for a little bit of self-reporting with that stuff and tying that in with the Building Inspector's Office. So I think there is a good opportunity there. And that ties in as well to, I just wanted to thank you, Jason, for attending that first kickoff meeting for the new permit software that we're working with. So this, as I mentioned on past meetings, will be a townwide objective to get everybody on the same page and the same system, or issuing things like A and Rs and permits, both for the Building Inspector's Office, the DPW, and other boards and committees who issue permits. So we're looking forward to be able to move this forward. We're looking at likely an early May target for being able to be able to fully go live with that. But I just wanted to express my gratitude, Jason, for you attending that first meeting to sort of
My pleasure. The only thing that I think you guys need to do is with the citizen enforcement, you got to get rid of the rat icon. I don't think too many people are going to click on that to make their complaints. So just get that out of the program. Okay, anyway. You know
Gecko or
Okay.
Work on mylar?
Yeah, so I guess in regard to that comment, Tom, that is one of the things that we're targeting with this new thing is potentially developing a revised submission requirement for the boards that would allow for fully electronic submission and markup of plans. Obviously, you know, the printer in my office still works, so should you guys need physical copies, that's fine, but I would like to be able to more easily catalog digitally things that are received from applicants. And if at all possible, be able to geo-reference them so that they're easier for you guys to bring into online GIS and things.
Yeah, that's great. That would be, that's going to be really good. I have to say, Robert, that a lot of what the consultant was saying at the meeting that I attended was it was beyond my pay grade. I I did not couldn't get what a lot of what he was talking about, but it was still interesting. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by seconded by Peter. Roll call vote. Harry?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Robert or Bob?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor. Thank you, everybody, and please make sure you attend the, if at all possible, attend the January sixth, you know, town meeting.
January sixth?
Did I say that? January eighteenth, sorry.
There could have been an insurrection.
Yeah, January eighteenth, town meeting, and there may very well be one, but it's important, as as some of you may know, that the ADU provision that was adopted in May was approved by two votes. So your vote will count. Yeah, so we'll see you folks on the eighteenth.
All right.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good luck on Tuesday. Yep.
Thank you.